Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council Meeting for Tuesday, March 26, 2019. Approve the council agenda and any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, council, I don't have any additions or corrections for you tonight.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Steve to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We don't have anybody here for invocation, so we'll just have a moment of silence. Next is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognizations of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Anybody have anything? Well, I did get a note here from somebody from Parkwood Apartments, the owner of Parkwood Apartments, kind of shouted, given a shout out to Mr. Olson for delivering sandbags to help them at their rental property, so just way to go, John.
It takes a lot of us to do it.
Yeah, and staff, right?
Yes, exactly.
All right, thank you. Public comment, anybody wants to address the council, please come forward, state name.
Approval of minutes from regular meeting minutes of March 12, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Steve to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion.
A is approval of issuing transit merchant license to Virginia and Daniel High Tower to operate fireworks stand in Walmart parking lot from June 20th to July 5, 2019. Approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Shady Lane Sportsman's Club, June 28th and 29th, 2019, at the McLeod County Fairgrounds. C is approval of resolution number 15021, resolution supporting comprehensive transportation funding. D is appointments of boards and commissions. Rhonda Schwartz to the senior advisory board till 2021. John Loft out to the planning commission through March 2024. Catherine Hallgren to the library board to April 2022. Gerald Goldie, Jared Goldie to the library board to April 2022. E is appropriations, claims, and contract payments.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Communications requests and petitions, public works 2018 year-end report. Evening, Kent.
Good evening, mayor and council. All right, yeah, annual report for 2018. Tried to keep this pretty brief, a lot of information. The entire report was included within your, in your packet, obviously. It's more of a documentation exercise on our front. There's a lot of information there, accomplishments, goals, water wastewater, activities, finances and such, so I'm just going to touch on a few things. Mr. Levine, Mr. Olson, Mr. Paulson are here. Mr. Gradke might be joining us shortly, so just want to touch on a few things, and if you have any questions, we're open to any questions, thoughts, comments, and go from there. Not going to go through all 80 slides or whatever is in here, but yeah, organization remains the same. Like I mentioned, you know, we have a respective departments within our public works groups, and you know, that's myself, John Paulson on the environmental regulatory front, John Olson, obviously, on operations and maintenance, water treatment, Eric Levine, and wastewater, Tim Gradke. Department staff, we've had a little bit of a change over the last year here, Mr. Herman there in the streets department, and Myers joined us from other local agencies in the area, so very fortunate to have them. And then the vacant position is filled by Josh Schulte, and Josh comes to us with some construction background, so fortunate to have him also join our staff. You know, things have evolved over the last five years or so here, we've become a much younger group in total, and you know, but it's going to happen, and you know, you start to look at this, and Mr. Olson, and Mr. Levine, and myself, and along with a few people in the streets department are turning into the more senior members of our group, so getting old, I guess.
Seasonal staff.
Seasonal staff.
It's season.
Seasonal staff, yeah, rather limited, all in all. We continue to, you know, struggle a little bit recruiting seasonals with the background or interests, I guess, in public works, so we're having some discussions, maybe there's a different HR approach that we can do to recruit and, and you know, maintain qualified, good seasonals on the public works front. Core services, won't go into a lot of detail here, this is really the meat and potatoes of our, our operations. This maybe sells, you know, a little short, there's a lot of different aspects or multiple aspects to some of the items included here, but just shows the realm, I guess, of what public works touches, and a lot of these are critical essential services, obviously. Accomplishments, there's quite a few slides here, I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail, obviously, we've talked a fair amount about the projects over the course of the last year, and everything's gone very well on that front, you know, and then we have the different maintenance activities that, that John administers primarily. You know, kind of miscellaneous construction somewhat outside of, you know, the magnitude of a public bid project that would, that would come to council. A lot of this, this activity, these maintenance improvements are handled by our, our budget line items, so they're not within our infrastructure program per se, that resource allocation committee sees, John identifies these and takes care of them with the budget resources. Other things, kind of on the grants, study, planning side of things, there's a lot going on, I guess, simply stated, you know, we were looking at the, the lakes and river basin improvements, Dakota Rail, South Grade Road, obviously, Main Street, Highway 15, we're looking at energy, energy savings conservation efforts with Amaresco, a lot of work on the wastewater treatment facility, doing an assessment, and then we have our utility rate study underway, and then, yeah, whether it's John, or John, or myself primarily, where I was looking for grant opportunities to help offset their infrastructure improvement costs.
So Kent, that's over $2 million we brought in last year.
Yeah. You have the numbers up there, and we were fortunate, and I don't think I maybe have mentioned this, but you look at the local partnership program numbers, and I was made aware of this about a week or so ago at the District 8 area transportation partnership meeting held by MINDAT, we did receive basically the full amount for the fourth one down there, the Highway 7 slash 15 walk and trail improvements. The other thing I think I mentioned with respect to the pedestrian crossing at Highway 7 Montana, MINDATs not, not only allocated us the federal dollars for 80% of the project, but they're going to provide the match, the 20% match for that improvement, so we're fortunate to get the full estimated $200,000 cost for that improvement. 2019 goals, yeah, we're, we're moving along on a lot of these things already, obviously, Fifth Avenue and South Grade Road, we've talked about with council at this point, we're starting to look at South Central Drainage Phase 2, developing that project. Other things on the radar that are developing, TDK Opener, Public Roadway, we've spoken about that quite a bit, Highway 7 Montana, PED crossing design, we're hopefully going to get that designed and through the federal process, and get that out for bids possibly in early 2020, and maybe get that implemented prior to Main Street happening in May of next year, believe it or not. LED street lighting, we keep, we keep looking at that, you know, we've taken a good look at it with Amaresco, we're going to continue down that path in conjunction with utilities to look at other options to deliver that project. Then utility projects that are on the radar, there's, like I said, there's a multitude of projects here that we need to address, I won't get into a whole lot of detail. Major projects on the plant side of things, we are scheduled to do our reverse osmosis membrane replacements at the water plant, probably bid that around June, July of this year, and look to get those in our possession, and staff will put, will do the replacements themselves sometime in September, probably. Wastewater, yeah, we can, we continue to look at a multitude of things to help us primarily on the energy conservation side of, side of things at the plant there. Facility projects, yeah, there's always something going on at the airport and cemetery, we've already brought the Columbaria project forward. And then a multitude of infrastructure maintenance, a lot of the planning policy activities are rolling over, you know, the rate study, the big one's going to be the MPCA wastewater permit, we've, we've talked a bit about that, we continue to have our conversations with the PCA, we have a meeting set up in the next week or so here, and get a better idea where we're going and what their thoughts are, and that'll start to take shape here in the near future. Then a few other things we have on the radar, Northeast Spring Road, we're obviously going to be talking about that later on this evening. We always like to just see where we're at, you know, budget, financial responsibility wise, you know, it's no secret, we take on and administer a fair amount of the city's financial resources, we think we've created, I guess, a mousetrap to do it fairly well between our staff, you know, John Olson and his financial background and expertise and project delivery wise, you know, we're lucky to have engineering technicians on staff to deliver projects in-house, to stay away from large consultant engineering expenses, and then with Eric and Tim at the, at the plants, they're always looking forward, and Mr. Paulson has a good understanding of project management and delivering initiatives, as you guys are well aware of. As usual, there's our mission statement, we haven't reinvented that or anything, so still holds true. I think the big thing that continues to be a focus is regulatory, regulatory, environmental focus that continues to evolve, you know, there's no secret what's happening around us, that's going to be reflected in our, our wastewater affluent permit, like I alluded to earlier, earlier, as that's developed. Now, a lot of the information later on in the report is, you know, is more inventory documentation oriented, won't get into a lot of detail, we touch on some different rate studies that, that we're aware of, that we participate in. You know, we, we take a good look at where our public works group employee hours are going with respect to our four primary departments. And then we get into even more detail with respect to the pay categories and what's actually being accomplished within those departments. And then something we've really focused on over the last many years for that matter, is we've, you know, tried to right-size our staff and, and really figure out what we can do, what our staff capabilities are, and you know, a lot of this plays into snow and ice and what we're, we're able to do at the treatment plants and hopefully minimize overtime premium pay hours, so we're actually very proud and where this is, where this has been heading over the last few years. Like I mentioned, Pcali up the hours, total hours at overtime rates, or the, the overtime rate applied to premium pay when people are called in unexpectedly and we have to pay them time and a half, you know, that equates to only 760 of our total employee hours, which is 1.3%, so it's a, it's a fraction nowadays. And with that, yeah, like I said, the majority of this is inventory documentation purposes. Would be open to any questions, thoughts?
Well, the first one I got for John, you want to, you want to touch on the Tea Hanger project? I see that you kind of threw out an email today that's kind of...
Sure, the Tea Hanger project, it was kind of a rush to get the foundation and the floor in before winter hit, and we had heating blankets and everything else on it to get the concrete cured. We had anticipated that we would see the building show up during the winter, there were a couple delays from the, not only the manufacturer, but the contractors that are constructing the building. We did find out they'll be here April 1st next week, and it should take about a month to construct the building, and then with the electrical and some of the other work related to the building, about another month, and then that puts us in, in place to be able to finish that project by the completion date of June 30th this, this summer, so looking good.
Happy guys.
Yeah, yeah, so, and then the Airport Commission's been working really hard to be in a spot that, you know, will be ready for that opening and have everybody's information and, and be able to divvy those out in the best way that we can, so.
And they will be full.
They will be full, there's no question, yeah, all of our hangars will be full at the end of the day, I'm pretty confident of that. There might be one or two of the open-sided ones that, but they, it's not all bad to have a transitory, a couple of them, so, yeah, that's, that's where we're at on that one, so.
Thanks, John.
Mm-hmm.
John, I got one for you now. The, how is the solar deal doing out at the wastewater?
What was that?
The solar?
Oh, we'll provide an update on that here too later in the year. It's doing okay, finally got the snow off the thing from February. It was covered for about a month, a little over a month because of the amount of snow, I just had nowhere to slough off to. Last year, we basically broke even with Amaresco, we didn't have it, have the, pay them, or have them pay any guarantees or anything along those lines, but that's something, like I said, we'll provide an update on, but overall, it seems like it's looking so far so good this year, we do still have some inverters that are bad, but we'll get those replaced this year at some point in time as well.
All right, are you still having some failing, or these are just some of the older ones?
These are some of the older ones that were bad last year, they only, Amaresco only had so many of them in stock for, for replacement purposes, they basically used up that entire stock, so they're in the process of procuring some more, and they're having similar issues at some of their other sites as well, so, like I said, they're just trying to get their hands on a few more, and they're in production actually currently, so, once they get those, like I said, sometime this year, we'll get those replaced and repaired, and hopefully get that system back up to full capacity, but at this point, I think we're operating at about 90, 95% of capacity, based on the weather and things we've been seeing as of late, so.
Thanks, John.
Thanks.
Kent, the other, one other thing I have for you, it's for a general public, if they have a bad pothole, how can they go about to report it?
Yeah, they can go onto the city website, or you can contact, what number you want them to use?
4219.
What's that?
4219.
4219, so, 234-4219, will get you directly to the street department.
On the city website, there's actually a button at the top called Report to Problem, and there's a list of different categories, and Streets is one of those, so.
Yeah, and John's well aware of most of our, our issues out on the system, not that no one can pop up pretty quickly, obviously, but you know, we're really, we're in a spot where we have to use cold mix at this point in time, like was mentioned in the, in the newspaper article, and hopefully, you know, I don't know when we might see hot mix.
Actually, we got a call, they opened up, we got our first load today.
Oh, so, that's good news, so we got hot mix, we can get more of them addressed, obviously, yep.
So where are we at with the permitting process?
With the PCA on the wastewater front? Yeah, John and Tim have been working very closely with the, with PCA's staff, they just reached out within the last week or so, and they want to, they do this for every community at some point in the permitting processes, where they want the administrator and the mayor, at the very least, to participate in an update meeting along with staff, so we'll learn more then, we've been working through some parameters with them, and we'll see what's stated at that meeting, and really, we're still in the holding pattern, as far as I know, so we're just, we're taking our time, wanting to really put the city in the best position we can, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. Just looking at some of the goals and accomplishments on the water side, there's a DNR water supply plan that was submitted, what's that about?
Yes, Eric, you want to talk about that?
It's submitted, and we haven't heard back from them.
What does that mean?
It's an annual report, that, I think it's about every...
Every 10 years.
10 years, yeah, so about every decade, we have to do a supply plan, basically explaining, you know, where our water's coming from with respect to the aquifer and such, and it's really a formality for the most part. And really, they have to approve that, and it's really, it's a process that they approve, they backcheck our, our water supply, and then that would allow them to authorize us to incorporate a new well, if need be, we don't foresee that need, or a new water tower, but obviously, we don't see either one of those on the horizon at this point.
The other important component of that is having a contingency plan, it's a big part of the tail end of that water supply plan, is in case a tower goes down, or fortunately, we have three towers, and those are all things that are factored into that, how much water is the community use on a daily basis, how much capacity do we have for storage, all of that is factored in, do we have alternative sources for water, say the well contaminated for some reason, could that potentially be used by the river, all of that kind of stuff is included in that type of assessment.
Yeah, and just a side note.
Is that something that should be passed on, just, you know?
Well, the last, about 10 years ago, we, they never approved the prior one to this one, is the irony, because of, it sat, it sat in a holding pattern, basically, at somebody's desk, and then they realized, then the conservation rate, state statute went into place, and they realized we don't have a true conservation rate system in place, so they might, the response, like Eric was alluding to, might be that they put this one in a holding pattern, their approval of it until our conservation rates are implemented.
Exactly, yep.
Free up and wait.
And that's why we're doing a rate study, yes, because things go hand in hand.
So what's the sodium bisulfite pilot study about?
I can explain that?
Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
That's a pilot study that we got permission from the Department of Health to do, and it's a, we got permission to do a 90-day study. The bisulfite is an oxygen scavenger, we do, that sometimes have some dissolved oxygen in our wells, and it's not good for the RO system, and so that's why we wanted to try it out, and if it would be successful, it would, it might actually carry through to our concentrate, and we'd have an easier time getting that down the hill without it precipitating, so, and we're right in the middle of that, we haven't really had any results yet, so.
You know, Eric, as long as you're on camera, why don't you state your name and your position, so everybody knows who you are?
I'm Eric Levine, Water Supervisor.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
These other guys, they get the camera all the time.
No, Eric does a great job up there, and yeah, it's a very technical plant, and looking forward and doing stuff such as this, you know, really addressing the issue with the precipitate that we've had that accumulates in the manholes, you know, it's basically, it's our, our discharge water out of our RO system, and it accumulates in the manholes, and we have to have a contractor come in and jet and basically chisel it out of there occasionally, so this would be a good thing, can figure that out.
Anything else for Kent? Just with the water usage, the pumping, you know, and then you look at the wastewater, and there's some differences, you know, where it could be 200 million gallons just in one year there, is that more like from the infiltration and...
Yeah, that's, exactly, Steve, that's primarily inflow and infiltration issues, and you might recall about a year ago, you know, John and Tim worked, worked on a study, you know, to identify those issues, and we, we put the, we broke the city up into areas, you know, with respect to our lift stations and how our collection system is configured, so I think we have, we have a good idea where the I and I issues are, you know, and we, we now just need to figure out a way to address them, we have a good understanding, you know, a lot of it is not necessarily pipes, it's structures, you know, it's the manholes themselves taking on water, so that is primarily the difference. We don't have a, from a water supply standpoint, we don't have a water loss issue where our water pipes are leaking, so that, you know, that's not causing that differential.
And then the last thing I saw that we're providing home water audits?
Yes.
Yeah, the guys are just starting those, we've kind of done it unofficially over the years, just with high water usage customers, just for conservation and try and save people money.
Yeah, and that's kind of a, it's a side effect of the AMR system, you know, the more precise data with respect to water use for any user that's available, so, yeah, we're able to drill down and identify where significant water use is happening where maybe doesn't make sense.
We might call them up then and offer that as a service to...
Yeah, yeah, staff has identified, you know, in conjunction with the billing department here at City Hall has identified users that are showing abnormal usage volumes.
And with our, even our billing staff, they've gotten a point too, where they'll contact a resident if they've noticed, you've had a significant jump in your water usage from this month to the last month, I know recently, in one of the fairgrounds, there was a, like toilet that was left leaking or something, and we had a thanks for letting us know, so.
Exactly.
That's, that's good. Just on the wastewater side, at the end of the report, there's a number of graphs, you know, for influent, affluent, and what some of the limits are, and typically, we're well, very well below the limits, since the limits are higher in some cases, there'd be operational saving... Since the limits are higher in some cases, would there be operational savings if we weren't as tight as what we're allowed? We use a lot of chemicals and...
I'll let Tim touch on that, yeah, I mean, you always want to buffer, but, yeah, Tim can provide more.
Sure, Tim Greck, you wastewater supervisor. To answer your question, Steve, yes, we would love to use less chemical, like in treating for phosphorus, because as you can see, our limit's one, we currently treat to around point five, point six. We have to do that because of the variability of what we see coming into the waste stream. So, one day, the influent might be at a four, the next day, it might be ten. So, with the buffering and the amount of capacity we have in the system, it takes a long time to make that change, if we have to ramp up chemical. So, we try to treat well below, in case we get a few days that have high, and we may be above the limit, but it's a calendar month average. So, we have to protect ourselves, not to run too close to the limit, in case we get a shock load at the end of the month, and we get caught, and all of a sudden, yeah, we have permit excursion, so, and the MPC takes that into account, even in their proposed limits. They said, you know, in the summer, we're proposing a point three two, we actually need you at a point one six, but we know, because of the way you treat, and you don't want to go over your limit, you're gonna probably be treating to a point one six, point two, to be under a point three two. So, that's their even, you know, that's their mentality also.
I guess I saw, like, ammonia, I think was one, where there's a higher winter limit, and is that right?
Yeah, we don't do really any treating for ammonia, it's just something that happens. We convert all of our, all of our ammonia over to nitrate. So, that's just something that naturally occurs in the process, and so, we're well below our limits, no matter what, for ammonia. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, kind of, back to your question, we're more focused on the operations, and, you know, we talked a lot about blowers, and, you know, boilers and such over the last year, few years on the wastewater front, so, yeah, Tim's right, I mean, we're, we have to have the buffer, and we're comfortable with our treatment process, and now we're really focusing on the mechanics of our treatment process, and what efficiencies can be gained there. The irony is, like Tim was alluding to, the PCA knows what we're able to treat to now, and that this is where our permit discussion is going, they're gonna actually somewhat hold that against us to set our new standards, because they, they know the history and the level we're able to treat at, so, they're, on that note, they're gonna try to ratchet our standards down, our parameters downward.
But of course, that's always the problem, because other cities...
Yep.
Aren't held to those same standards.
And you're exactly right, that's the irony, yep.
No, irony is...
Not irony, it's the sad truth, I guess, yeah. It's ironic to some degree, but it's, yeah, it's not consistent, it's inconsistent, yeah, no doubt.
Well, I was gonna recognize the energy savings and the work operational, you can see we're trying different things, and just really appreciate that, too. That's all, thanks.
Anything else for Kent?
Thank you.
Thank you, good report, thank you. Discussion on tree removal and energy tree program.
Mayor Council, we've, this was, I guess, at the request of Councilmember Cook, so I'll just turn it over to Tim at this point, so.
Well, I just, you know, we've talked several times through the Emerald Ash Borer Plan, and then also with some of the street projects, like Highway, or Fifth Avenue, that's gonna be done, and really wanted to get a sense from the council, because some of this is more policy-related, as far as giving direction to staff and how to approach things, and, you know, I understand in the Emerald Ash Borer Plan, there's two things. One talks about, under proactive management, as opportunity arises, to reduce the population of ash trees as part of street and roadway improvement projects. And then, there's also something about, you know, the city's, has the diversification program, and to strategically and proactively remove ash trees, replace them. I guess, we've heard in a lot of the discussions, that mature trees provide the most benefit, so, and then plus just the looks of the roadways, maybe parks, and so, really, what do we want to see when there are opportunities like this? Like on Fifth Avenue, we're taking every ash, versus would every other one be okay? We're still being proactive with the removals and diversification, but we're still maintaining some of the look of the roadways and the mature trees, and then mixing in, kind of incorporating more of a mix of maturities, as well as species. The flip side, it's, like, you know, we've had other discussions, do we proactively take out some of the more healthy trees, even in those high concentration areas? So, I understand some areas, you've taken them, like I would imagine, Kent, on South Grade Road, if that trail gets built, we narrow up the road there for the trail, there's a bunch of ash trees there that'll probably be in the way. So, we can't really do anything about that, but other ones, or if we have opportunities to save some of the trees, is that what we'd like to see? I guess, again, this is more policy, and that's why I wanted, but it's worth talking, though.
Personally, I think that we have a master arborist on staff, and I wholeheartedly support what he should decide what to do, I mean, that's why we have him on staff, and I think he has the ability to judge which tree should go and which tree should stay, and that's my feeling on it.
That's not what's happening here. What's happening is an opportunity, as part of a street project, or we saw Northwoods Park, and all of them got taken down. It wasn't, it wasn't health issues, it was opportunity-based, and that's where I think, again, policy-wise, giving them some directions to go from there.
But who decides that? Which tree stays, which tree goes? I mean, I'm not qualified to do that, either are you. I mean, we don't. I look at Fifth Avenue, and certainly, there are a lot of trees on that street, it's a lovely street, and it, and, you know, they will be missed, but when we're redoing the whole street, that is probably the time to take care of those trees, instead of going back here, there, and everywhere, when, when that little nasty Emerald Ash Borer shows up.
So, Kent, would you want to go into, like, the reasoning on why they were decided to be removed at that time?
Yeah, I think, like, what we touched on, and Steve's, Steve's point is valid, that, you know, and I want to say, it's not purely Donovan's decision, you know, this is project-related, and, you know, we look at the corridor, whether it was last year up on the northeast side of town, and Northwoods, and Spruce, and those streets, eleven, and, and, you know, Fifth Avenue itself, in this situation, you know, we're coming in, we're doing the whole street, where it's gonna be disturbed, basically, right-of-way line to right-of-way line, to some degree, and that's gonna vary in different areas, you know, and some streets, or some trees need to be removed because of the new trail, the new sidewalk, the street width changing, or maybe the exact location of the street being slightly a different alignment, and those trees, you know, they have to go, and it doesn't matter if they're ash or not. And then Donovan looks at the corridor as a whole, like Steve mentioned, are there, is there some spacing issues? Is there, you know, where you got two large trees too close, well, maybe one of them should go away, and he'll decide which one goes away. Unhealthy trees, trees that, you know, maybe are a point in their life where they're starting to present a risk, you know, we don't want to have a boulevard tree fall on a home, you know, so we look at that. And then really, the last piece of the puzzle is ash trees and the foreseeable Emerald Ash Borer issue, and, and we're simply looking at it from the standpoint, we're gonna have a tree contractor there, they're gonna be addressing a multitude of trees regardless, and if we're going to be out, you know, diversifying our tree species across the city and taking ash trees, why wouldn't we just simply remove the ash trees within the context of the project at this point in time? It's more of an efficiency, you know, question, and then, like I, when we talked last time about this, and kind of what you're saying, Mary, you know, who picks which ash tree stays, which tree goes, and that's, it's not as simple as picking every other one, in my mind, and you gotta justify that to homeowners, you know? Why did you take the one in front of my house, and you left one next door? I think from staff's standpoint, and it's not Donovan just wanting to take every ash tree, that's, that's not his, his train of thought, you know, it's really approaching us from a corridor standpoint, we're gonna have a tree contractor there, we're removing ash trees in other places in town, why wouldn't we do them within the context of the project?
Is that, everybody comfortable with that?
I don't think it's a broken system, I mean, I know you're wound up about Fifth Avenue and about Northwoods, but it goes pretty isolated, isolated instances?
There'd be more, I guess, so, they're just...
Right, but how are you gonna write a policy like Kent's, like, well, we're gonna keep every other ash tree, or, you know, we're gonna keep, it's, I think there is an efficiency to be gained, from what it sounds like, probably a little bit of a cost savings, and certainly an inconvenience savings, you know, if we're gonna have to close down Fifth Avenue, and when all the ash trees need to be removed, you know, that's gonna be inefficient for people.
You know, policy-wise, your options would be, you know, you're going to say, we're keeping X of percentage of trees on every project, is one option, which, like I said, there's challenges with that, but that at least gives staff the idea that, okay, we're looking at a corridor, and a certain percentage are gonna be kept, or, you know, we have to meet that mandate to keep the percentage, knowing what Kent says, there's a lot of that goes, that goes into it, or you, you get into the position where you, as a council, pick and choose which trees are keeping and going, so.
I don't even think it has to be that, you know, like a percentage, that it's just, we want to have a mix of maturities, and then that, some flexibility, but, but the point is, we're not taking them all, so.
I think, I think staff has that the best interest in mind.
Right.
I don't think that they go and clear-cut anything, I mean, I believe our staff does a great job.
Yeah, and, and the, you know, removals and replacements might not happen one right after the other, you know, just because of where we're at with stock, or whether we're gonna use our own staff or contractors to replace. I guess, the thought process that I've had, and chatting with Donovan, and kind of thinking about it from the engineering perspective, is that really, you know, certain projects require us to, to take a look at the trees, you know, if we're going outside the curb lines, if we're, depending on, you know, whether we're changing alignment, or changing the geometrics of the roadway. So, in those cases, you know, an inventory happens automatically, you know, while the project is being developed. So, part of my thinking is that we could come to something along the lines of, you know, for those projects that do, or potentially affect trees, where we would need to consider the placement and the location of those existing trees, that would give us an opportunity to kind of kick in and say, okay, what are the condition of those trees? Are those trees sited properly for interference, for example, with the other infrastructure? You know, are they in the right spot? And then, and then we could take a look at, what's the likelihood of damaging that tree during construction activities? And then get into the conversation on the corridor of species diversity. I think we could potentially, like you said, I think this, you're right on, it's an opportunity, Fifth Avenue, and that's, that's kind of the way we looked at it, and then how do we, you know, and then, not only that, you take it back to the engineering side, how do you deliver that, and, and keep peace along the route? So, that's kind of the step, I guess, that we could take, and then, and then maybe we go down to the target of, you know, our target is right around ten percent, and if we are below that, there would have to be some other reason to, you know, relative to the location, or the, you know, the impact of construction on that particular tree, or the condition of a particular tree, that we could take into account.
You're saying a ten percent target within that boulevard, even?
Correct, yes, yeah.
Because, say, again, Fifth Avenue, that's what we're talking about, but, you know, basically, from Adams Street West to Hassan, just about every tree is an ash tree.
Yes, correct.
And then you go from Hassan to Main Street, well, then there are oaks, and maybe some maples.
Yeah, there's a couple of different ones.
So, nothing's gonna get taken out of there, and...
Right, yeah.
And then, of course, west of Adams, there you have the trail, and, you know, so that's gonna get wide, and that's gonna be different, so, and that's where, even looking at the ten percent piece, it's, you're looking at it...
Yeah.
Globally, you know, so, why?
Right, of those trees, how many of them are where, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Not even say, infrastructure-wise, Kent, you know, or talk, decided to change the sidewalk to five feet, is that gonna be five feet from Main Street East to Adams as well?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take the entire, five, yeah, the entire sidewalk within the project.
Which is the existing, is five feet.
Yep.
So, but, so are we still going to move the sidewalk over, or why not just keep it where it's at? On the drawings, it looked like it was gonna move, and then plus, gain a foot originally, which would cut it into those trees, where if we kept it what it is, you know, would that lessen the impact on some of them? So, again, it's...
Yeah, we took it from the home side, the one foot, pulled it away from the right-of-way, because that's the feedback we were receiving from some property owners, that the sidewalk was too close to their homes, so we pulled it back. And we're comfortable with the boulevard space relative to the trees that are remaining between the sidewalk and the curbing.
Yep, and what you're talking about is the homeowners on the west side...
Yep.
Of Main Street.
Primarily, yeah, that's where the input came from.
But the east side, we're moving it also, and then just...
I mean, and there's some homes on the east side that are relatively close, too, you know, so, granted, they weren't vocal, but there's some that are just as close, so it's continuity. I think the other thing, from a corridor standpoint, I go just from a, I don't know, a human property owner perspective, and it's back to who's picking the ash trees that remain, and then Emerald Ash Borer shows up at, you know, two, three years from now, and we're out there plucking, knocking down ash trees, and, or five years from now, and property owners are gonna say, well, it's unfortunate, you didn't give me a new tree that could be five years older at this point. that could be five years older at this point, and you're now taking the ash tree. Not to say it's going to happen in five years, but I just, it's continuity, and it's consistency in my mind. And, you know, we have enough going on in these projects where we don't need to be debating with property owners whose ash trees stays and whose goes. You know, that's what I struggle with, honestly.
Think some would appreciate having trees still there? We'll probably hear from some about why you're doing ours, so, right? The second thing was the Energy Tree Program. In the report last year, or last week, you mentioned that we're only going to take 30, and there is funding issues, but apparently, talking to Matt, and there...
Yeah, that was...
That was your, what do you call it, your typical government miscommunication.
Right, yeah, yeah. Left-hand, right-hand thing, or something. Peter and Paul have something to do with it, I think, I'm not really sure, but...
Where was Mary?
So, so I, yes, and, and I, and I noted that, kind of, that look I got. So I wrote, you know, asked some questions, and worked, and Matt and I talked and figured it out, and I figured it, you know, kind of how the, how the whole thing works. Yes, we are planning a full 120-tree program. And, you know, we put some budgeting together that fits in with the budgeting that, that shows up in our 2019 budget, and shared those with Matt and Kent and Andy and stuff. And I think, you know, we're, we're in good shape to do that. You know, we do, we do really have several different planting programs that we do. We do the Development Tree Program that's funded through the building permits and the escrows from developments past. And then we have, of course, the Energy Tree Program. In this case, you know, that, that amount of money used to typically come from Hutch Utilities, but that's being phased out, but accounted for in another way through the, through the pilot, in essence. And then the third program, of course, is the Diversification Program. We work with parks also. We end up, you know, at some point in time, probably having a little bit more trees that we buy to place in parks than what Parks actually buys. And that ends up oftentimes being related to Arbor Day, of course. And we have some of that. So we've, we've kind of worked through, Donovan and I, kind of, line by line, how many trees we expect to go where, and what we will look at for average cost of that tree, so that our total average for 2019 doesn't, you know, it's not going up real fast compared to where we've been at that roughly the 90, I think we were at $94, $95, something like that, last year. We'll probably be right at 100 or so for 2019, so... Yeah, so I think, I think that, that was the easy part. So, once we, once I, once the light came on for me, and it just took a little conversation, so...
So that's advertised in the paper, or else online?
It will be shortly here. We have been taking applications anyway, up to now, and would continue to do that. And we typically do that until we hit that, roughly that 50 to 55 mark, somewhere in there. Because if you do the trees and you figure it out, you know, more often than not, we're averaging a couple of trees per site. Some can use three, and there's others that can only use one, depending on the layout of the property. So we kind of, we'll watch that as, as those come in, and, you know, may cut that off prior to Labor Day, if that's the case, if we start seeing more applications come in, so... All right.
That was easy. One last one on Fifth Avenue, Kent. There's a big elm tree near Grace Lutheran Park that the sidewalk currently goes around, and that's targeted for removal. And are we just removing that because it's in the way of the sidewalk, or...
Yeah, it, it's a good tree, it's obviously a large tree, it's, it's been there for a while. Yeah, and primarily, Steve, yeah, we're at a point, where do we put the sidewalk with respect to that, that tree? The sidewalk does go around it today. It's on the private property. There's no easement for our city infrastructure to reside on private property. So honestly, that's what we're struggling with. I mean, it's a nice tree, it's, it's a, it's a ways along, and it's, it's life cycle, not... So that's really what we're up against, honestly.
Just currently, the sidewalk where it's at, in that section, not even replace it, and just wait?
Yeah, well, we should go get an easement for it then, though, now that we know it, it's residing on private property without any sort of property rights being dedicated to the city.
Just wanted to ask about that one, too.
Yeah, no, we had a conversation between engineering staff and Donovan, and, you know, it's one of those things, yeah, it's a nice tree, it's, it's far enough along, and it's, and it's life, you know, should we... And, and really, you're up against an issue you can't, you shouldn't be, yeah. Really, the only option probably would be to leave the existing sidewalk where it's at. I'd hate to build a new, a new sidewalk, and then you disturb the underlying soils, and all of a sudden, the, the panels of your new sidewalk are getting popped up and the likes, so... And there's really no good place for the sidewalk to go relative to the tree to protect us from potential root damage.
Just another one I wanted to raise.
Yeah.
Maybe the easement's an easy thing, maybe, so...
But really, we should go even further, and then we need to have a conversation with somebody about pushing a sidewalk, you know, a fair distance into their yard, you know, so... Yeah, to really get a safe, we wouldn't want to build that sidewalk as close as it is to the tree today.
That's what I'm saying, just leave the one that's there, and build onto it, go on west or east. Anyway, that's all. I promise I won't talk anymore about it. All right, what went on? Till next meeting.
I was going to say something, but I didn't. One thing I do want to know, and we've talked about it with staff, and it was probably back in August, that we did look at the EAB policy, and there were some changes. We do need to bring that back for formal action on that here, too, so...
All right.
So you will have to talk about trees again, at least one more time, so...
One more time? Okay.
Be ready.
On finished business, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 19-794, ordinance establishing a sustainability board.
Excuse me, Mayor and Council, this has actually took place at our second, our second meeting in February, where we approved the first reading of that ordinance. I did hand out on your desk tonight, just to revise one. It doesn't change the integrity of the ordinance. It has mainly to do with Section C 3, where the, the language, and I think that was just to try to get a better understanding of what was actually motioned at the last meeting, or at the meeting where we made some minor adjustments to it. But that should read, one at-large member may be a non-resident of the City of Hutchinson, which was a little bit different than what was in your council packet. But otherwise, simply noted what was changed from the first reading that was approved by the council. And so, other than that, nothing else has changed, and it's up and available, I guess, for a second reading and adoption tonight, if you're comfortable with it.
Motion to approve?
I will second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad, to approve the ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Second reading and adoption of ordinance number 19-796, ordinance revising Chapter 90, right-of-way management.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Provide just a brief update. At our last city council meeting, we approved the first reading of the proposed right-of-way ordinance associated with establishing aesthetic standards for small cell installations within our right-of-way. Tonight is the consideration for the second reading, and then ultimately, this publishing of the summary ordinance. We haven't received any additional comments or feedback on this at this time. If you recall, primarily, this was to establish height setback restrictions, colors, those types of things associated with poles, installations associated with small cell. If you have any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Same as what we had, right?
Yep, nothing's changed.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to approve the ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Second reading and adoption of ordinance number 19-798, ordinance regulating smoking in city parks.
Mayor and Council, you had your first reading of this ordinance at our, at our last meeting. Since that time, we've received no comments regarding the ordinance. So it is in front of you for consideration tonight as, as a second reading. As I noted to you in a separate email, I think I sent out to you Friday, and we included on the, on your desk tonight, there was some consideration for potentially some alternative language to the ordinance. That was brought forth by Councilmember Cook, based off of some feedback that he had received. And so you could consider that, some language change, which would essentially make it a new first reading of an ordinance that you would have to bring back for consideration most likely at your next council meeting. So really, you're faced with, I guess, two options right now. Consideration of the, the second reading of the language as it was presented in your council packet, or if you're willing to, I guess, make any changes to the ordinance, that would then be considered a first reading tonight.
And so as Matt had mentioned, I was talking to somebody affiliated with the Huskies and using Veterans Memorial Park, and just asked that we consider allowing smokeless tobacco for the participants because it's part of baseball? And same would be this with Roberts Park because of the adult leagues. And I guess I was okay with it because it doesn't impact us really, so...
I'll make a motion to approve it as a first reading with the added language.
Second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Steve, to approve first reading. Any other discussion on it?
Probably, I just as well get my two cents in here. I don't remember this being within 25 feet of any city playground. I thought it was within 25 feet of any activity that was being handled, played by, or whatever the case may be, of children in that area, and then you had to step back 25 feet. The way I read this now, and probably understand it more, is that you're saying 25 feet from any city playground, or within confines of, da-da-da, that type of thing. So my question is, is that, so there's nothing in that playground, nothing going on, you still want it at 25 feet from that playground? Am I reading that correctly?
Correct.
Correct.
And why would that be? Maybe the wrong time to ask the question, but going to ask it anyway.
Just figuring that most people in playgrounds, they're going to have children with them, I guess, that was trying to cover it that way.
So are you telling me that 9:00 at night, that that's going to be an issue? Or 6:00 in the morning be an issue?
If adults want to sit on Barney, I guess.
Have a heat?
And then have a heat.
They'll have to smoke somewhere else, yeah, that's what they're saying. Well, yeah, that's exactly what it's saying, is that they would have to find somewhere else to smoke and not be able to sit in the middle of the playground and smoke.
It could go over to the shelter, right, next to it, or somewhere else, or... anywhere else.
It really doesn't cut out very much parkland. If you look at all the parks, there's a lot of places people can smoke. They don't need to sit in the middle of the playground, even if there aren't kids around.
What you're saying, in the city playground, city playground doesn't include the park, is that what you're...
Right. Yeah, it's just the playground area.
That's what I'm looking for clarification on.
Yeah, the language that's presented basically states that you can't smoke in a ballfield area. And you can't smoke within a playground, I should say, within 25 feet. That's essentially what the language, that's, that's what was presented at the last meeting. None of that language has changed.
I don't think it changed, I think I misunderstood it from that perspective. So I'm just trying to admit my fault to the thing and clarify the situation, that they can still smoke in the park, just not 25 feet within the playground area.
Correct.
Okay.
Because it was, it was brought up about, you know, asking about if children are present. Well, I mean, it's, you know, what, what I am understanding is by the swing sets, or by the slide, or stuff like that. Correct?
Correct.
All righty.
I thought you were going to clarify.
All right, call a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? All right, new business, lease amendment with T-Mobile at South Park Water Tower. John?
Evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. For your consideration tonight is a lease amendment to an existing lease with T-Mobile located at our South Park Water Tower. The reason for the request from T-Mobile is they're looking for additional rental space on that site that's city-owned. The city has a lease, like I said, existing with them. That lease extends probably about another 10 to 12 years down the road, I can't recall exactly. But within the existing lease, this is allowed use. This is associated directly with their telecommunications equipment. Ultimately, what is being proposed is a backup power generator. In case there's a loss of power at the site, their equipment can continue to operate. One thing associated with that is obviously for backup power, power outages don't discriminate on daytime, nighttime. This is located near a residential area. So associated with this is also subsequently, after the approval of the lease amendment, would be permitting, plan reviews, which would also include things associated with noise impact statements, and proper permitting to address that. There may be enclosures within the generator if the decibel levels are too high, all things associated with that. This is just the lease amendment, it's part of our, as part of our process, we always do these amendments first, with the condition that, you know, nothing's going to get built or constructed until we go through the proper permitting and plan review process. So at this time, all we're considering is the amendment to the lease to allow for the additional space. Like I said, it's an allowed use within existing lease. They're just looking for that more square footage. If, for whatever reason, if the generator plan review, that process requires that they need additional space, we would have to come back for an amendment. But in the conversations that we've had with T-Mobile up to this point, they feel that they can achieve the city's current ordinance requirements with the square footage that they're asking for at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I sent you some information about the noise, so I just asked that you really look at that because, again, looking at the manufacturer's information, it's 71, or 72 dB from 23 feet away from the front of the generator. And they said it can be more from the side. So now this is going to be elevated also, so I don't know what the bottom might be. To get an idea of what, how the sound propagates, I did find an online calculator, and at night, our noise ordinance is 50 dB. And it's right under that, like 49.7, about 300 feet away, which is some of those homes on Fourth Avenue, so...
Correct.
Just make sure they show us the right information there.
Yep, and that, that is part of the process, as I noted. They'll have to prove to us that they can achieve those limits at daytime, nighttime. Those requirements for noise, different from day to night, different types of land use zoning districts as well. Dan's full, Dan Jokum's fully aware of the process, we've discussed this. Actually, on the same site, a few years ago, Verizon was proposing the same thing. They had proposed the lease amendment. Actually, at the same time, they were just asking questions relative to our process on the noise impact and those things. So, yeah, we've been through the process already. So, yeah, we've been through the process already with them. Ultimately, Verizon didn't want to proceed at the same time. But a big reason because of that is that the additional cost for the enclosures to be able to keep it at those certain decibel levels with certain setbacks and all those things associated with that. Technologies evolve over time as well, generators can get quieter. All of those things, enclosures can be more effective. And so that's changed as well over that time. But that'll all be part of that process. They'll have to prove that they can achieve that at daytime, nighttime with the associated setbacks associated with the local land use there.
Perfect.
Normally, they run off of city power?
They do run.
Off of city power. So typically, in any situation, emergency wouldn't probably last that long to begin with, unless it was something disastrous.
I wouldn't believe so. One of the things, if you've ever noticed, if you've been in a power outage, it's incredibly quiet outside. There's not humming of things, and I mean, that seems to be more prominent at that time. But, yeah, that absolutely is a consideration as part of that as well. We got really reliable power. Really, it's just for T-Mobile's peace of mind. I don't believe they've had outages there of any significant length. We've never heard of any complaints associated with any of our telecom users on any of our water sites because, like I said, we got really reliable power, which is a great thing.
Yeah, I just wanted to make note that when the power's out, probably out for everyone, so-
Right.
Yeah, emergencies don't last that long in this city, so.
Correct. One more thing of note as well, any revisions, amendments, or changes that are made to the construction drawings that are referenced as Exhibit B one as an attachment to this lease amendment? Any changes that are accompanied because of the plan review and permitting process? Those changes, once that plan review is finalized with that permit in hand, that'll ultimately become the final Exhibit B one associated with this lease amendment.
Did note that the power provider is Excel, so must not be familiar with Hutchinsons.
Hey, we got a grant from Excel, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Dave to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Thank you.
Financial contribution to the McLeod County Hutchinson Northeast Ring Road feasibility study, Phase One. Kent?
Yes, and this, I guess, was touched on quite a bit at the joint county board, city council meeting a few weeks back. And what's in your packet is, you know, basically an overview of the scope of work showing the two phases for the proposed feasibility study with respect to the northeast Ring Road. You know, and I should explain, that's the concept of a ring road, similar to the southwest Ring Road between Highway seven on the west side of town and Highway fifteen on the south side of town. This would be between Highway fifteen on the north side of town and then tying into the Highway seven twenty-two intersection, obviously, on the east side of town. So this has been in the works for some times. Sometime, the county has laid out some potential alignments, corridors. And they're really at a point now to understand the need from a traffic standpoint for this improvement and look at the origin destination traffic data that's available at this point in time. And the quality of that data has really evolved over the last few years, primarily due to cell phones and how they're able to be tracked, whether we like it or not. So with that, the county's approached us, county engineering staff, wanting to gauge our interest in contributing to the first phase of this feasibility study. They had many conversations with the county engineer. I think this is a good approach. It's a good phased approach to the feasibility effort that their consultant will be undertaking. We don't wanna necessarily, I think there's a little bit of hesitation in why it's being phased is you don't wanna just jump to the, what would be about eighty thousand dollar, seventy, five thousand dollar contract. You know, we really wanna understand the traffic dynamics before we, you know, enter the second phase of a true feasibility study effort, which would be public engagement, looking at design alternatives, feedback, and really setting yourself up to deliver a project. But I think first and foremost, we need to understand, and the county needs to understand, how this potential roadway would be utilized. So with that, the Phase One is being proposed by the consultant to the county engineer at twenty-two thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars. And I would propose that we contribute eight thousand dollars to that effort. That's similar to the county's contribution in our O and D study about five years or so ago, after a transportation study. And we did have a contribution from MinDOT also. So that study, I think, was about thirty percent MinDOT, thirty percent county, and about forty percent city is what that arrived at. This is similar, it really gets us a seat at the table. Not that we wouldn't have one, as this has developed, obviously. But I think this is in our best interest.
Well, it benefits us, obviously, if we can get some of the trucks to understand that whole dynamic more. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve the study. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Accepting low bid for campground sewer project. Dolph?
Mayor and council, included in your packet is the bid summary for the West River, Masonic West River Sanitary Sewer Project. As we indicated previously, eight of the sites had some issues. Working internally with the engineering department, John Olson specifically, we determined that redoing the entire system would be preferred rather than going in and trying to knock off just one at a time. This project sets us up in the future for some expansion of the campground that's been talked about from time to time. The initial project would have us create two additional sites, Site thirteen and fourteen, that would be open at some point during the summer. We have three bidders on the project. The low bid was provided by Jewel Contracting in the amount of sixty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy cents. The original engineering estimates and what we discussed with the council back in January was a project that might be somewhere in the seventy-eight thousand dollar range. So this is significantly below that number. Does the council have any questions?
It's a good project, and it's needed.
Yeah.
Hopefully, completion?
Completion's gonna be a moving target. We have sent out an email to, because back January second, with our automated system, we went live. We thought, you know, we might have a normal winter and that May twenty-fourth would be an okay target date. We have contacted the people that have camper reservations and given them a couple of options. The pop-up side of the park and the tent side of the park's gonna be open, and occasionally, there's RVs in there. So we've reserved all those, so if people wanna move and the project's not done, we'll be able to let them move. It's also Memorial Weekend, and we said, if you don't wanna risk taking a chance, there are other campgrounds in the state of Minnesota, even though we know you like ours best. But we're just trying to give ourselves enough room to make sure it's done because the big fear's gonna be they're gonna dig in and that hole's gonna fill up with water to our proximity to the river.
We've seen that.
Yeah, we have seen that on other projects. So, but anyway, we got a good number, and the minute road restrictions are off and we can dig a hole and it doesn't fill up with water, they'll proceed. And, you know, there's a shot that it might be done by Memorial Day. But we're trying not to bank on that and give anybody any false hope. It'll be done when it's done.
Dolph?
Yeah.
How late do you rent the campsite?
We go until MEA weekend, typically, in the fall. And we usually have a pretty full September and October. Actually, we stay open a lot later than most campgrounds. And I think maybe only once or twice it's, you know, had some freeze-up potential, but never a good hard freeze, so. People enjoy that park in the late fall and, you know, using the trail, and we're glad they use it.
I'll make a motion to approve the project.
I'll second.
Dolph, Art.
Okay, I'll say it.
Everyone seconded it, so.
Motion by Chad, second by everyone. By Mary, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Dolph. Setting special city council meeting on April third, two thousand and eighteen, at twelve noon at the Hutchinson Event Center for the engagement meeting with the League of Minnesota Cities.
Yeah, mayor and council, I'm currently in the process of kinda working on a, the league calls it just an engagement meeting where we're kinda hosting, and we've invited the neighboring cities, I think there's fourteen other cities that we've invited to kinda meet with staff, just talk about things that are going on the league, what they're doing for us, what we maybe need some help with, or. And so I've heard, at least from two of you, interest in attending. And so just to, I guess, make sure that we're covered, I thought it'd be appropriate for us to set that as a meeting for the full council.
I'll make a motion to set that as a meeting for April third.
Second. Motion by Mary, second by Steve to set the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Minutes and reports from committees, boards, or commissions. We have the City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Investment Report for February two thousand and nineteen. Public Arts Commission minutes from February fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Snow Removal and Ice Control Report for February two thousand and nineteen. Hutchinson Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board Minutes from February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
I just had one thing with the financial report. This didn't get touched on last week with what Andy had, but kinda ties into the public works and the sales tax part for the water, wastewater, and... Just wanted people to know that it's really doing what it was designed to do. Right now, you know, all that money goes to pay the debt payments, which then frees up money that, for improvement projects. Just a lot of the things that Kent was showing in the report, right, so.
Yep, exactly, no, it served its purpose very well. We do have facility and system needs on the water wastewater front. And, you know, just with our plants nowadays and some of the things that's our goals and accomplishments, you know, those are with respect to our new plant improvements that are already, you know, thirteen years old on the waterfront and over a decade old on the wastewater membrane bioreactor front. So these things, they're not new forever, you know. So, yeah, it's served us well to help offset that debt as we address needs. And really, from a system standpoint, there was a period of time there where we were utilizing our road dollars to fund utility projects, you know, a few years ago. So, yeah, it's been a blessing.
The other thing, Matt, you know, there's questions, and we touched on it, I know, in the last budget cycle, about questions about paying off that debt early. But we really are limited in what we can do, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, some of that was PFA, which was money given to us at a low interest rate from the state, and that's just not an option in regards to those funds. And then we, we still got pretty high balance to where it's just difficult for us to-
But even if we wanted to-
Yeah, it's-
That public financing-
Isn't gonna allow us, so.
So, thanks, Steve. Tim, you have anything else for us?
Certainly, Mayor.
You were just waiting. I know Eric kinda snuck out, so.
He doesn't, gone. They're gonna call on me. No, actually, some good news after a lot of the, you know, the talk of permitting and stuff like that. Just last Friday, did some investigating and found out that tomorrow through Friday is the MPCA's annual wastewater operations conference. And normally, on Wednesday afternoon, they hand out a yearly commendation of operational excellence to wastewater plants that meet certain criteria, turned in all their DMRs on time, met their limits, had no violations. So for some reason, we were not on that list. And so Friday, I had the opportunity to ask, what was the reason? Because we got a summary of our operations from last year for me to review, and I saw nothing on there. So I asked, they investigated, they said, yes, there was a mistake. There was a more recent occurrence of something that happened in November, which is outside of last year's parameters. And so they said, nope, that's in this year, it's not last year. So you should be getting a certificate of operational excellence. So tomorrow afternoon, I'll be going down to accept that on behalf of the city. So I wanna give a shout-out to my staff for the excellent work that they do each and every day and continue to do. And then also, I was invited by the MPCA to sit in on a symposium on Thursday morning, which they're talking about some of the salty parameter stuff that's happening in the class three and four waters. And they were asking or inviting cities that may be impacted by these salty parameter limits to attend and sit in on that. So that should be interesting, and so hope to give you a report on what became of that, too.
Well, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Definitely.
For everybody.
Good job.
You know, that's, yeah, like Tim said, that's not a given by any means. You know, there's a lot of diligence and record-keeping. It's amazing the requirements from the PCA to, you know, it's, it is what it is to run a wastewater plant in Minnesota. So, yeah, by no means is that award given. And a lot of time, these events that happen to us, like Tim alluded to, that basically can get that award taken away. You know, that's driven by weather events, you know, high-flow issues and the likes. So that's a lot of times out of our control.
Correct. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. With the permit, Kent and Tim, in conversations with the gentleman, with the coalition, he mentioned that a new federal law that got passed the end of last year, beginning of this year, provided for what they called an integrated planning, which allows cities to work and develop their plans.
Yeah.
John?
My backup.
John's ears went off.
So is that something, or is, what, basically, it sounded like water, wastewater, stormwater, kinda gets pulled together and you can work on things, kinda one at a time type of a deal, which might be beneficial?
Right, it's a process that allows you to prioritize based on your community's funding, capital, needs. All that stuff kinda gets poured into a big gonkulator to determine. And part of that is public outreach within the community, businesses, council members. So it's a process, it's a big planning process ultimately is what it is, to identify what are our needs, long-term, short-term, how do we get there, how do we achieve that? We've been meeting with the MPCA, and that's through the Minnesota Environmental Science and Economic Review Board, and then also the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. These are the PCA commissioner on a quarterly basis typically. And as part of that, that's one of the items that was brought up at the last meeting was looking at potentially establishing or developing some sort of a pilot program in Minnesota for integrated planning. Chances are, if that does move forward to some extent, it might include some funding to be able to kick something like that off within the state of Minnesota, look at identifying a couple of communities. I floated out there, Hutchinson might be one of those, that that would fit well just based on the current permit conditions and things that we're up against on that front. Not just that, all of our infrastructure needs, our capital needs that we have within our community. So, yeah, it's something that the PCA is fully aware about at the highest level. And then also, the League of Minnesota, Craig Johnson's in, he's knowledgeable, but he's part of those conversations, CGMC, Messer, all of those organizations are aware. They're, it's part of the process to work through that and discuss that and try to find a solution.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Usually, you got it under control.
You got anything else as long as you're up here?
Yes, I do have a quick one.
Okay.
Um, this is a little bit down the road, but it's worth pointing out. Um, the city's hosting their rain barrel program in the end of April. Uh, the actual sale date will be April 27th from 2 to 4 p- 2 to 4 p.m. on Saturday. Um, in the utility billing that goes out in April, that'll include information about the sale date. Um, we'll also post stuff on Facebook and the website regarding it as well. Um, the barrels are $55 again this year. Um, the one change in the, in the program is the Crow River Organization of Water will not be involved this year. Um, they've kind of handed that ball over to the cities and, uh, Soil and Water Conservation Districts that have participated in the past. So ultimately what it is, we order a semi truck load full of rain barrels from, uh, manufacturer and then we distribute it to different entities within the, within the Crow River watershed that are interested in selling those, um, to their customers or to their, um, citizens of their community. So the city will be involved in that. Again, it's, like I said, it's kind of in a new context, but, um, we'll have those barrels available in the end of April. So look for more information on the near future.
All right, thanks, John. Dolph, you got anything else? Kent?
One item, uh, river flows and I sent out some, some information, uh, yesterday, I believe. And, yeah, things have subsided a little bit, you know. Uh, I think you were talking before the meeting, uh, Second Avenue is always a good indicator of where elevations are at and how far up on the road it is or across the road. So, yeah, it, it has got, I think it's almost off the road or just onto the shoulder now. Uh, we were looking at the, uh, John and I were talking, uh, the flood, uh, not the flood, the, the river flow gauge up in Cosmos spiked up pretty good here the last half day or so. So, uh, might be an indicator, either an ice dam let loose or, uh, or the ditches and tiles are starting to open up upstream in the, uh, the basin. So, yeah, I, like I mentioned, I think there's maybe a, a peak yet to come here, once the ditches flow gets, picks up and, uh, the ice came off the, the river, uh, upstream here earlier today. So, yeah, I think we're, we're sitting good. Um, obviously there's been news reports with respect to, to Delano and Mayor and, and Watertown over the last week or so downstream of us. But, uh, yeah, big thanks to, uh, past and present staff that really, uh, put us in a great position when it, when it comes to overland river flooding. You know, we, we don't have a lot to be worried about here in Hutchinson. And if we had something happen here, I'd hate to be downstream of us, honestly. So.
Anything else? That's it?
That's it.
Oh, my gosh.
I would just like to point out, you didn't say just briefly, but you were actually very brief. Typically you'll say just briefly and then go on for a while, so.
I'm, I'm still waiting for him, the Columbo, I see. Oh, just one more thing. Dave, let's start with you tonight.
I have nothing.
To be honest with you.
All right.
I'll pass.
All right, Steve?
A couple of quick things. I think, uh, Washington Avenue is kinda tough shape with potholes and cracks, but I did look, it looks like 2021 that's scheduled.
A lot of the street, we're waiting, they're in a holding pattern until Main Street is, is completed and then we'll tie a lot of those streets into the, the limits of the Main Street project in 2020 and take off from there. And those streets are gonna see a fair amount of construction traffic in 2020. That's just the nature of the beast. You know, they're gonna have front-end loaders on them and trucks coming in. I looked on those side streets.
And with that, I'd heard that those bump outs by the alley might get removed, is that?
Yeah, John and I have, uh, John Olson and I have been, been talking about that and there's been some drainage concerns from neighboring property owners. So, yeah, I think we're, we're looking at that and it's one of those things, looking back, yeah, we're, we're kinda struggling with what, other than aesthetics, which sometimes can be debatable, but the, what purpose they, they truly serve. We don't have other mid-block bump outs islands within our community. So, yeah, I, they've just presented a, a unique drainage dynamic.
There's no catch basin right there?
There's a catch basin there, but it's really, you got a flat curb line and, uh, the water, you know, you're starting to turn water and stack water, you're starting to get snow caught in a corner and it, it ices and it, it shaded, obviously. The, the building there shades the sun from the sun.
How's that gonna be different from Main Street on the west side? Say, that'll get shaded and, uh?
Yeah, uh, while those bump outs are not, they're not gonna be as severe and have such a tight corner.
Just because these are dead.
They're gonna be more gradual in nature.
They're very problematic for snow removal.
Yep.
But like I said.
The business is there, yeah.
Like I said, we're gonna run into that with Main Street, other than, I know they're a little more gradual.
They're gradual, yeah, and there, there's more of a taper to them. Yeah. I think, honest, I think it was an aesthetic.
It's kinda nice.
Yeah, manity, but I think it's something we're not gonna do anywhere else. And if they're presenting an issue and we're getting feedback from an adjacent property owner, I think we're struggling with, is there truly a need for them or, you know, can we live without them, honestly? I think is where we're at. And I've been walking by them for years and I've scratched my head a little bit, you know, it's my train of thought on them. Cause we're not gonna further that concept, that approach on other streets. I that's, we don't foresee that.
That one was just kinda a unique opportunity to.
Yeah, it tied to the streetscaping project back then and, yeah, I think it was a concept that we somewhat piloted, you know, and those plans were, and that development of that plan, uh, and that approach came out of the, the previous downtown plan. And, uh, and this somewhat predates me a little bit. Not that I'm trying to pass the blame here or anything, but it's, it's really a concept that, yeah, it makes sense in some areas, but if it's gonna be somewhat problematic and you're not gonna move that approach forward, you know, to other streets, and that's not our intent at this point. It's, I, I guess what we're struggling with is justifying them to an adjacent property owner i- is the, the truth. And then from a public works maintenance standpoint, you know, and, and John's not here, Mr. Olson, you know, he doesn't have any, you know, bad feelings about them going away either. So that's really the struggle.
Actually danced a little bit. Talked about them going away.
It's kinda, it's like the island, it's like the island we took out by the, at the movie theater. You know, that delineator separator median, not an island, more so a median. Yeah, it makes sense from a traffic delineation, channelization standpoint, but, you know, if it, if it doesn't work well with respect to snow, not that snow governs all our decisions, but, uh, it's one of those things, if we're not gonna do that in more places with more consistency, why have it in one spot?
Maybe it could round them off.
What's that?
Maybe it could round it off.
Well, it wouldn't fix the drainage dynamics, but yeah.
Main Street 2020, you know, what, you know, we've still got local cost decisions, don't know where the plans are. We haven't talked about that.
Yeah, no, it, it's been some time. Just quickly, we're gonna be talking more about it in April here. We're really setting ourselves up to dive back in. Uh, the consultant and Mindot, they've been, uh, you know, knee deep in the, uh, design and final design and preparing for the 90% plants. The middle, the consultant is in the middle of April here. And, you know, we're gonna get back to the citizen advisory group in early April. We're gonna have a discussion at Resource Allocation Committee with respect to, uh, planters and staging, construction staging and some other items and how those things are, are taking shape. So, yeah, i- it's coming soon, Steve. We're just, we've been in, there's been plenty of work going on in the background with staff, trust me, but it's, uh, right, we gotta get back to really ironing out, you know, the planter approach. Uh, and I wanna bring the construction staging to council, but I really wanna bring that first to, uh, the citizens group and the resource allocation committee. And then either the first or second meeting in April, we'll, we'll talk construction staging. And then after that, Mindot's gonna start contacting property owners and start to talk construction one-on-one with property owners.
And then Matt sent out something about, um, the river plan and, uh, Representative Erdol and Grunhagen sponsored a bill, bonding bill for that plan for four and a half million dollars in the House. And Senator Newman sponsored a, uh, companion bill in the Senate. And Representative Erdol invited me to a hearing that they had last week in the Capital Investment Committee. And all that was for was to hear different projects, five minutes, informational thing, and no decisions were made at that point. But, uh, um, he thought it went well. Um, of course, we'll see. He doesn't foresee any bonding bill of that size this year, but really sets us up for more next year. And, uh, the one question was we weren't asking for a local contribution in this, but kinda stressed that, one, we've done a lot already with the, the dam and then also the stormwater pond projects that we've done, plus the current one we're working on. And that this plan, th- these funds would help alleviate some of the sedimentation that's coming into the basin from outside the city. Uh, so, um, Nate, uh, the chair picked up on that right away, which was good. So, um, the last thing, I don't know, um, looks like there's a piece of equipment at the KFC building.
The other day it's got knocked down.
KFC is gone.
It is gone.
Foundation, or the, the slabs there, yes, that's it.
It was there yesterday.
They're moving, they're moving along. I guess, Gary, I love this book. Yeah, maybe with respect to, uh, the state legislature and, and I know you and I talked about this, Steve, but, uh, there was a bill, a bonding bill presented on the 212 front for the, uh, westerly gaps and it came from, uh, Senator, uh, Jensen over in the, uh, Waconia area. And I talked to the Carver County engineer the other day at a meeting that I'm, a group I'm involved with and, yeah, he clarified, that's really a, uh, kind of a, oh, it's just a, an outreach exercise more than anything to draw attention to those needs. I- it's a, it's a, it's a bonding proposal and it is for geo-bonding apparently, whereas you, you can't use geo-bonding dollars on trunk highways. So, yeah, that's, that's contrary to, to existing statutes. So, but it, it was a good exercise to really get the word out for the needs for those easterly gaps. They're almost, or westerly gap, west of clone, uh, east of clone, they're almost there. Basically, uh, they're looking, uh, Carver County's looking to get Mindot to find another $5 million and then to participate in the right-of-way acquisition. The Con- Carver County does not wanna be on, on the hook for all the right-of-way acquisition. So, uh, they're making strides. The goal is still 2022 for the, uh, the easterly gaps to address those. And, uh, yeah, with respect to the west side, they're getting a lot of press and legislators know about them and, uh, you know, trying to shine some light on it to get Mindot's attention. So, it's a good thing.
Chad?
I don't have anything extra.
Mary?
I have one thing and I don't know if I wanna mention it now. The turkeys. They are.
Thanksgiving's a long time away.
They are on the move. I mean, there's, I counted 15 on Jewel Road.
Any?
15.
That's so small.
Right. So, and they're move, you know, they are on, they're definitely on the move and they're going wherever and they do stop the traffic and people are irritated by that. So I don't know if we need to.
The best thing is to call the police because then we've got that documented complaint. Um, and then, you know, we can start the process. You know, one thing we have to remind is that we're under the guise of whatever the DNR allows and they've given us the authority to remove some, but not all. And so we just need to get, and I know Dana, they were looking at doing that. I'm not sure if they've gotten out to do it yet, but.
Per policy, what are we allowed to remove or call the flock down?
I think we're, we're allowed to, to remove them down to eight.
Yeah, cause there's a lot more of them than that out there.
Yeah.
Bless this time, you know, they're definitely, uh.
Rowdy?
Yeah. They're, they're looking.
But I'll, um, I'll mention again, I know we talked to Chief Hatton about a month ago and he was gonna be looking at going out and.
I just wanna butt in here. I think if you go slow through a flock of turkeys, they get out of the way. But you gotta go slow. You can't stop moving, cause if you stop moving, there's definitely gonna be stuff. You just gotta keep pushing a little bit. When they were down on Second Street, or Dale Street the last time, if people just kept moving, they got out of the way. They're not gonna get run over.
That one didn't move fast enough, Dave.
Huh?
That one didn't move fast enough.
Saw a lot of feathers in our driveway. My wife accused me of doing that and I said, no.
Anything else, Mary?
Nope, that's it.
Matt?
Um, one thing to note, the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference is June 26th to 28th. It's up in Duluth this year. Registration has opened, so if you're interested in attending, just let me know. That's it, that's it for me, yep.
Uh, I do have a letter here, uh, me, dear, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, because I and my wife Cindy are relocating to northern Minnesota, I will resign from the appointment to the Hutchinson and Pioneer Land Library Boards. This is effective April 1st, 2019. Serving on the library board was a highlight of my many years of life as a resident of Hutchinson and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to be involved. Sincerely, Jack Sandberg.
And he will be missed.
Yes, I heard he was a very.
He's very active, very good on that board.
Yeah, he was even our rep to the Pioneer Land.
Right.
So.
So, thank you to Jack for his service.
Yes, and obviously looking for anybody who may be interested, so.
Yes, looking for, um, yes, if there's anybody out there that wants to serve on a board to find out what all happens, please come down and see Amy and you can get a.
Melissa?
Interest or Melissa to get an interest form. All righty, if that, uh, enjoy the weather tomorrow. I heard we're gonna have, uh, as they say, a top 10 weather day tomorrow. In German, in German it's in order.
So moved.
Motion by Chad, seconded by Dave to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Both, Gary?